Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Grischoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here. Thank you. First item on this evening's agenda will be to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. First item then is to approve the minutes of the February 18th, 2020 meeting.
Your Honor, move the minutes to February 18th.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Geisler. Any discussion or corrections?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac?
I'm just wondering if the minute should state that Councilmember Geisler was present at the last meeting via the interactive TV. I know that we've noted our minutes that way in the past. I don't know if it needs to be formalized or not.
Rather than just present?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. Felt like she was here. She was making motions.
She was making motions. I could hear the echo.
Yeah, really. So.
Okay.
Whatever's normal there, okay.
I'll add that to the second.
All right. Any other discussion?
Do you want to clarify it's the printed one and not the attached one?
It's the printed one, yes, not the one that came on Friday.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And those minutes are approved. We have two items on our consent agenda. The first one is item two on this evening's agenda, and that's to receive the lawful gambling report and authorize payment to Community Strength Foundation. And since this is where Community Strength gets a good portion of its funding, I'm going to go ahead and read this. "When the Community Strength Foundation was established in 2012, the city council indicated its intent to contribute 90% of charitable gambling revenues to the foundation. Council has asked to accept the lawful gambling payments report for 2019 and authorize the 2019 payment to the foundation. The city collects 5% of all lawful gambling revenue generated within the city. The city council has agreed to disperse 90% of the charitable gambling revenue the city collects to the Community Strength Foundation. In 2019, the total lawful gambling contribution to the city equaled $54,697.82, making the 90% contribution equal to $49,228.4. The 2019 cumulative fund balance for the amount the city retains from the lawful gambling is currently $36,321.21. As authorized by state statute, these funds may be used for projects deemed appropriate by council. So we're looking to accept the 2019 5% lawful gambling payments report and authorize the expenditure of $49,228.4 to the Community Strength Foundation." Item three. Where are you? Oh. My iPad just spaced it. But that's why you give me a printed copy, right? Item three, which is the second item on the consent agenda, is to consider Resolution 20-33 concerning access to multi-unit housing structures by the United States Census Bureau employees. City staff has been conducting various outreach efforts to encourage participation in the upcoming 2020 United States Census. Households will receive mailings in March 2020 that will encourage online completion of the census form. Those households that do not complete the form online or by form will receive a paper questionnaire in the mail around April 1st. This is really just extra information. Census enumerators will begin canvassing households that did not self-respond later in April and will continue through the summer because Coon Rapids self-response rate dropped between the 2000 and 2010 census. Staff believes that localized outreach is important, ensuring a complete count is critical for equal political representation, fair distribution of federal and state funding, and sound planning and investment in infrastructure, real estate, business development, and public policy programming." So what this action is going to do is the council will adopt Resolution 20-33 concerning access to multi-unit housing structures by the United States Census Bureau employees. If I would have read everything else, it would have gotten down to where one of the challenges is getting reporting from the multi-unit housing. So this is just kind of codifying that and encouraging everybody to participate and providing access. And I'll see if my iPad's working. And that was actually everything on the consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Grischoviac to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells.
I'm just curious if I refresh my memory of the $36,000 the city has from the 5%. Have we used that in the past or have we earmarked that for anything?
Mayor and council, it is not earmarked or anything particular right now. However, in state statute, there's a prescriptive list of things that those dollars can be used for. So within that prescription, the council may use those dollars wherever they see fit. In the past, we've used it sparingly, I would say. Most recently, I can recall using it for our Hope for Youth grant of sorts, but that was four or five years ago. But since then, I don't think we've used those funds for anything.
It builds pretty slowly, so.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. All right. We are on to item four. And I just need to get my list. Oh, well, I'll be lost. All right. So item four is to consider Planning Case 19-18. Consider the preliminary plat Pheasant Hollow, 12031 Partridge Street, North Star Improvements. Mr. Harlecker?
Yes, good evening. Excuse me, Mayor and council members. This proposed plat involved a 48 acre site outlined right here. It's to the north of Gateway Commercial Project and south of 121st. This is Highway 10 here. The majority of the site is wetland and floodplain. Really, the only developable portion of the site is what's being considered tonight, and it's up here in the northeast corner. The applicant is proposing four lots extending Osage Street down into the property with a cul-de-sac, and the four lots will front on that cul-de-sac. The developable area of the property is zoned LDR2, and the lots do comply with a dimensional requirements of the LDR2 zoning district, as well as the building pads, as shown, meet the setback requirements. Sewer and water will be extended down into the site from Osage, which is constructed to here, and then it will be branched out to service each of the lots. Grading and stormwater management. They're proposing to set up a drainage pond, excuse me, here between lots two and three with overland drainage down to here. This area here, the dashed area, is the 25-foot wetland buffer. You can see the purple line here is the current boundary of the floodplain. What's being proposed for fill is outlined by yellow. So most of this, lot four, some of lot three, two as well as one, is being filled. The applicant has been working with the engineering department as well as Coon Creek Watershed on mitigating the wetland fill. The majority of that is taking place out in this area here where they're lowering the level out here to make up for the fill that they're placing on the building pads. For park dedication, the city is requesting, city staff is requesting a 20-foot trail easement along the north property line. That would meet the, to meet the park dedication requirement. The planning commission meeting, several residents were at the meeting and asked about the, a lot of the questions are on grading, and it's the city's policy and practice not to allow runoff onto adjacent properties. All the stormwater management has to occur on the property that's being developed. There was some discussion, there is an existing driveway that comes in on here off of Partridge Street. That driveway is within a public road right-of-way that was decided back in 1996, and it was made a public roadway as a result of a judicial decision. Staff is recommending that that driveway be removed because access to lot one will now be off of Osage Street. The commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions. Condition one, compliance with Title 11. Number two, engineering comments be addressed. Number three, existing garage and house. And then staff would like to add, and driveway be removed prior to the issuance of building permits. Number four, park dedication requirement be met prior to releasing the plat for recording. Five, a street tree be planted on each lot, minimum of two and a half calipers or inches. Developers agreement be executed between the city and the developer. And then a seventh condition, that the public road along the south 28 feet of the northern property line be vacated prior to releasing the plat for recording. At this point, there's no longer a need for that roadway, and city staff is recommending that that roadway be vacated. With that, staff will answer any questions.
And the applicant is in the audience also, if you have any questions of the applicant.
This might be a question from Mr. Hammer. The trail easement that we're talking about there on the north side of this property, is that the trail that we talked about planning last year, two years ago, when we moved, you know, originally, we were going to do the trail from Lyons Coon Creek, like, down through the Gateway property, and that was going to be really expensive? So was this the alternative trail we were looking at?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is that alignment from kind of the curve on 121st and Shenandoah over towards Coon Creek and north towards Maine. That's exactly correct.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you. All right. Councilmember Demmer?
The wetlands there, I know we've had a couple discussions about the difference between sort of the existing floodplain as specked by, can't remember which government agency, NOAA, whoever, versus the sort of reality floodplain that it seems like has, the world has changed to. And I know that at some point, you talked about there was going to be a revised floodplain How are we dealing with that? Are we looking at both of them when we're talking about this? Because I'd hate to build it and then have to go back and add a whole bunch of drainage tiles because we used the official government data that we knew was wrong.
Councilmember Demmer and members of the council, there's kind of two things here, wetlands and floodplain. FEMA and Atlas 14 don't affect.
FEMA, that was the one.
Don't affect Atlas 14. This is kind of modeled through Coon Creek Watershed District as well, so it's the best available data, so that would include Atlas 14.
Okay. So you think, you think that the drainage situation, to the best of your knowledge, would be adequate?
Based upon the current Atlas 14 data.
Knowing all of the issues that we had at Port Riverwalk vacating roadway and easements, part of the last thing here will be that the 28-foot roadway will be vacated, is that actually in the deed and they're going to have to remove that from the deed then? Or, because it looks like just a dirt driveway on the aerial.
It is. This is going to be, this is a unique one as well. It's much different than Port Riverwalk, but this was actually in a court decision. A jury found that a public road, give me the exact, what did they conclude? That there, that a public road by common law and statutory dedication shall be legally described. And so there was a jury trial, you know, back in the mid-'90s. The legal description is wild and crazy. It references an actual garage on the property as part of the legal description. It's never been recorded. We think we can still go, I mean, it's, we'll go through the same process and we'll, it'll be more, I guess, hopefully fairly straightforward that way because it hasn't been recorded. In some ways, that makes it easier. We probably won't record the vacation either, but at least we've gone through the process to do it. At least that's our intent. We've struggled with this one, and that's why it's sort of being added late. We appreciate the developer's flexibility on this piece of it. I mean, it's, it's just kind of a bizarre, came into it in a bizarre way, and it'll probably leave in a, hopefully somewhat less bizarre way.
I mean, obviously, it's got a legal description, but it's kind of a meets and bounds kind of legal description?
Worse than that, I would say.
Okay.
I mean, I'll read it too, just because I think it's somewhat, it's the, and the scat pretty much is, Mr. Harlecker's pretty much nailed it, from the northerly properly, south 28 feet wide from the end of Partridge Street to the eastern edge of Doyle Rogers Garage for exhibit seven. And so that was a, that's in a court order.
At least it didn't say as far as the eye can see.
No. So at least, it does provide, I think, an adequate description. I mean, the garage is still there. We've got a really good idea where that is, but that will be a condition. I think that'll certainly help to clear up any issues over there with respect to that roadway.
Thank you.
Sorry for that long explanation.
And the garage no longer, no longer belongs to Doyle Rogers?
No. It's. It's everywhere now.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
Well, I actually remember this property a couple of times, actually, from Planning Commission years and years and years ago, and having conversations about what could be built there and how could it be built. And all in all, this is almost eons in the making. But it's, it seems like a reasonable use. It's zoned LDR2. People have a right to build on their property, and everything, to me, works well. And so with that, I would make a motion in Planning Case 19-18 to recommend the city council approve the preliminary plat for Pheasant Hollow with the following conditions. And I'll read them because they've got changes. Number one, compliance with Title 11. Number two, all engineering comments be addressed. Number three, the existing garage and house and driveway be removed prior to the issuance of any building permits. Four, park dedication requirement be met prior to releasing the plat for recording. One street tree per lot. Trees must be a minimum of caliper of 2.5 inches. And I would like to add that it meets the city acceptable trees. The, so there's only certain kinds of trees that we accept as street trees. Number six, a developer agreement be executed between the city and developer. And number seven, that the public road be vacated before recording the plat, before releasing the plat for recording.
Thank you. Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Mr. Harlecker, with the following condition, number four, park dedication requirement be met prior to releasing the plat for recording, is that the 20-foot easement in lieu of the park dedication fee?
Mayor and council members, it might be appropriate for council to specify exactly what they're requiring or requesting for, to meet the park dedication requirement. There is also the option of cash for the lots. City staff is recommending that the trail easement be dedicated in lieu of the cash.
So, Mr. Mayor, so I would amend the motion to note that number four, the park dedication requirement, is the trail easement.
I agree. I agree.
Okay. Okay. So that's the motion.
And then I have a question after that. Yes, please. Second.
Okay. Councilmember Demmer?
So the plat itself was my next question. One, four, and three, I understand, but house number two, one corner of it's on, and maybe this is totally preliminary, but if we're approving the plat, I'm not quite sure how preliminary it is. The one corner of the house is exactly on the easement line, and the other corner is exactly on WLB, which I assume is the wetlands barrier.
Yeah. That's not actually the house, though.
That's the place they could put the house on.
Somewhere within that.
Okay.
Correct.
So they, the question ends up being, can they build the house right to the corner of that wetlands barrier?
They can. There need to be main outside of that buffer area. One of the engineering comments was, is that the signage be included. That delineates where the edge of that wetland buffer is, so future property owners know where the, where the limits are for disturbance and putting things.
So there's, there's no concern from you that that buildable would be right up against it? Because I would imagine you'd need at least a little room to walk behind the house. But you're, it's just a, an imaginary line, so it's okay?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Hammer?
That's the wetland buffer. It's just kind of a no-maintain area, so certainly you can walk back there. That's just, it's not going to be irrigated. It's not going to be turf. It's not going to be sheds. And yes, you can build right up to any easement lines or that buffer line.
And I know that there was a lot of concerns about the trail and the trail easement. At this time, it's just preserving an easement. I don't, tonight's really not a conversation about the trail. Tonight's a conversation about this development. We've, you know, a long time ago, we made the decision that that was going to be a future trail, you know? So whether it is, whether, when it happens, I don't know, but that'll be another discussion for another day. But I think that, I agree with council, so far, I guess, that I think we need to preserve that as an option, because if we don't, then we don't, we won't have an ability to put a trail through there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grischoviac?
I agree with that. I think this should be preserved. I think councils before us, planners before us, did envision a trail back there. I know there's a trail easement behind the development, the bluffs of Coon Creek, which, you know, in, at a future state, might be utilized. I had a couple of questions that were raised to me from some members of that community. One of them was brought up in the last, in the planning commission meeting, and that is the homes directly north of this property and east of Osage, those backyards are a little bit low, and I'm just concerned, I guess, that if there's fill being brought into this development, and the pond is so far south on this property, I mean, do we ensure that we're not going to have excessive rainwater and other runoff into the backyards of the folks over east of Osage? That's, how is that mitigated? How do we, how does an engineering plan ensure that?
I'll have to defer to Mr. Hammer on the engineering aspect of that.
Because I understood from the planning commission meeting, as it's designed, that the fill is brought in, but then it's, you know, it's graded and leveled back away. But I'm just not sure how that works hydrologically, or...
Mr. Grischoviac, I can give you a little personal experience from building a house where there's the different grading. And bottom line is, when you get your grading plans done and when you do the grading, you have to ensure that any water that's on your land, that you are mitigating and moving it away from your land, not going to your neighbor's land.
Okay. So that concern is covered.
You know, that is part of the rules that we have. And, you know, to be able to pass your grading permits and those kinds of things, they've got to see that you're not grading your water to your neighbor.
Okay. All right. So that, that will be met.
You can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, my, what you said, Councilmember Geisler, Councilmember Grischoviac, is accurate. I'm just looking at the grading plan here. It looks like it's sheet seven or eight. I don't recall which, but there's definitely drainage that occurs on that common lot line that flows east to west. There's also a 30-foot drainage and utility easement on both sets of properties. So this development is dedicating a 30-foot drainage and utility easement along the north property line, and there already exists a 30-foot drainage and utility easement on those existing homes. There's a sanitary sewer back there as well as drainage. So the water generally flows to the east, and the excavation behind these building pads that are going to occur, it's filling the pads, but it's removing that from the lower area to the east. So it will shed water kind of west to east, and then that can then flow south into the wetland complex. But as Councilmember Geisler said, there's, there's always going to be little intricacies. There might be a period of time during construction that a little bit of water goes over there, but with certified grading plans and ASBILTS and things, that drainage will work west to east and then filter to the south.
Okay.
Councilmember Demmer?
Can I just clarify, what a drainage easement means there is there can be standing water in that area, even though people often think of it as their yard.
That is correct.
So the practical side of this, that's hard, is we've reserved the right to let water drain into that part of the yard, be through easements, which are already existing, but if it hasn't historically been sitting there and now in the future it is, that feels like something new to the homeowner, even though contractually it was always a possibility? Do we do our best to avoid filling those drainage easements that didn't used to be filled?
Well, that's why, Councilmember Demmer, we avoid doing that at all costs. I mean, certainly, if someone comes along and plants a garden or puts a shed in there, that starts to alter drainage patterns that have historically existed, and that starts to create problems. We, if somebody wanted to come in and do that, we would say that's a drainage and utility easement you can't construct in there. If they needed a permit, we wouldn't allow it. But certainly, things do happen on the weekends and in the evenings. But yes, this, it's to convey the drainage, and there's also a significant sanitary sewer trunk line back through there.
Okay. So it's just, just a clarification. I want to make sure people understood that we weren't saying, well, we've already said that water can be in there, so we're going to put water in there. It's more of a, we know that there will be times where occasionally a big storm happens, and we're going to try to keep it in that area while it runs off, but we're not going to intentionally add water to it or do development in such a way where the grading of the new development puts water in there, even though, this isn't a legally, we have the right, so we're going to do it. We're still going to try to avoid it.
The grading plan that's shown has, has almost two feet of fall going west-east across two lots, and so the drainage is going to work down the common lot line the way it should be, thus the drainage and utility easements that are put there.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Gischoviac?
One other thing I wanted to bring up, and it was brought forth by a constituent, and that's that the former property there has some history with a lot of the neighbors and the activity that was going on there. There's a concern that there may be some hazardous materials in that garage or around on that property, that if this is demolished, that needs to be, you know, taken care of and disposed of properly. I would imagine as part of the site demolition that that would occur, but it's a concern that some of the neighbors presented, so.
Do they, do they pull a permit for raising that garage? Do they pull a permit for raising that garage? And so, we would, how would, I'm just curious. I mean, if somebody went in there with a bag full of dumpster and just started moving stuff, and how would we know if there was hazardous?
Mr. Mayor, council, a demolition permit is required. That's what happens. Typically, they go in advance of that, and is there lead-based paint? Is there any asbestos? So, they have to do a pre-demolition survey to evaluate the contents, and then mitigate those as part of the demolition.
And that alleviates the concern, I'm sure. That's all it was.
Thank you. Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. That was four. Item five, consider resolution 20-34, affirming an inter-fund loan to TIF District 3-1. This is what the EDA just dealt with prior to the meeting. TIF District 3-1 was established in 2002 to facilitate redevelopment of the Village Ten Shopping Center near Northdale Boulevard and Hanson Boulevard. The project involves city issuance of bonds to finance certain public redevelopment costs, including improvements to Northdale Boulevard necessitated by construction of a Cub Food Store at the shopping center. The tax increment generated has been used to cover the bond repayments. In 2011 and 2012, the city council adopted resolutions authorizing the use of other available funds on a temporary basis to prepay certain installments of the principal of the bonds. This arrangement was intended to minimize interest expense. While the 2011 and 2012 resolutions and accompanying documentation establish the intent of these fund transfers, the council is now asked to adopt a resolution affirming and definitively documenting this arrangement. The EDA will also be asked, well, we've already done that, to adopt the same resolution. The inter-fund loan mechanism will help ensure proper reporting of the TIF District's revenues and expenditures, and the district will be decertified by 2023. Does anybody need any description on that or have any questions?
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
This is largely a housekeeping recommendation and resolution, and is really there to make the public record clear. I would move that council adopt resolution 20-34, affirming an inter-fund loan to TIF District 3-1.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Is there any discussion?
One question.
Councilmember Demmer.
Slightly germane question. As we're getting close to decertifying a TIF district, it just made me wonder if, when we do TIF, if there's ever anything where we go back and sort of score whether it turned out it was a good idea or not. Do we ever do an R O I? Or some sort of calculation that, yep, we got it right, this added benefit over and beyond the, I know you don't pay money for TIF, but it would just be nice to see a scorecard at some point to help guide us as we make future decisions, not tying that to voting on this, just throwing that out there.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Frillius.
That is one of the things that we have talked to, I had mentioned earlier, the Ellers Municipal Advisory Group. That's one of the things we've asked them to help us with, is do that analysis. So, that's something we can explore, and I think it would be valuable information.
Probably second, actually.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item six is to consider denial of therapeutic massage enterprise license, Vitality Spa 3033 Coon Rapids Boulevard. Pursuant to City Code Section 5-2908, the city council is charged with either approving or denying applications for therapeutic massage enterprise licensure. The applicant applied for licensure on January 30th, 2020 to operate at Vitality Spa 33, 30, 33 Coon Rapids Boulevard. The required background investigation has been completed. During that background investigation, staff found that Mr. Zhang worked at Healing Massage in Maplewood, and Healing Massage has been and is currently being listed on rubmaps.com. My browser protects me from going to there. I don't even know what it is.
Well, you can...
But then it says, rubmaps.com is a website that is known to be utilized by its users for soliciting prostitution. Additionally, he did not provide any additional employment, and the city's requirements are to provide five years of employment in order for staff to confirm and verify the applicant's work status. Several more paragraphs.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Take over from here. I'll give you sort of an overview of what's going on. So, we've asked you to deny tonight based on a couple of sections of the code, one being moral standing, and so that's why we're listing all of these things that we're concerned about. The first one you mentioned was his connection to the massage location that is currently advertising on rubmaps. Then we've got a situation where there's a gap in work history, and after making contact with him, we've not been provided with any other work history besides that. Then we've got the listing of addresses. Mr. Zhang, on the application, claims to have lived both in Blaine and at an address in California at the same time, and that address in California was not, it's on his driver's license, but it's not listed in the application. So, when asked about that, there was no explanation given. The police department was not able to, our city code requires two affidavits of good moral character from residents of the metropolitan area. In an attempt to locate and make contact with those references, the first person was found not to exist and unable to be contacted, and the second one, though they didn't provide the correct information, there was enough there that they did discover that person exists. But neither reference has the Minnesota driver's license, so the police department was unable to determine whether or not they do live in the metro and whether they can be a legitimate reference for the applicant. And then finally, tonight, while we were going through things, looking for, you know, the information to present tonight, there's one additional finding I'd like you to add, if you go the direction of denial, and that is that the purchase contract for this business was provided, and I don't know if they meant to do it or not, but we've got it, and the business is being purchased from a known business associate of Julia Wang, and you may remember that name. She's been subject of license revocations metrowide, most recently in Fridley, and then her name was part of a reason why we here revoked the license for the business connection to illegal sexual activity at her location. So, with that, I will answer any questions.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
So, Ms. Lenzmeyer, one of the things that was provided as affirmative information was that the applicant had worked at a place called Healing Massage in Maplewood, and that is the reference to the entity being listed on rubmaps, this website. I see that in Maplewood, they have similar criteria for massage therapists to be licensed in Maplewood, and to have worked at an accredited, or have gotten an education at an accredited program. Your summary of this indicates that Mr. Zhang provided, or was unable to provide documentation of completion of massage therapy training through an accredited program. Indeed, the program that was listed was unaccredited. Do you know, or not accredited, do you know if Mr. Zhang has an existing license through Maplewood or ever did have, and whether that was revoked or suspended at any point in time?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Johnson, we did check with Maplewood, and he was licensed there, worked there for just a short amount of time. They have different standards for accreditation. We have in our code specific COMTA, which is the Commission on Massage Therapy Associations, and then we've got the Department of Education, and the program that he went to may fit their criteria, it just does not fit here.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Anything else? I know we've got the attorney for him here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may, one more thing. The letters were mailed to the applicant, missing a one in the address, so we quickly rectified that. We called, emailed, and we resent the letter. So, there's two separate actions. The one that you're being asked to consider is the massage enterprise license. The city clerk's office has already denied the massage therapist license. That, he would have 10 days from the date we mailed the letter, so his date, his deadline to appeal would be March 12th. He has not done that, and I will point out that you do not have to hold a massage therapy license yourself in order to be licensed as a massage enterprise, but you must employ someone who does. So, the education part tonight is not part of what we would recommend the denial of the enterprise on.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Dongfa Cho Z H O Q. I'm here on behalf of the business owners who prefer not to be on the public TV. I realize that this is my third time here. Hope the third time is a charm. I know I have a high bar, but you know what? I think the one thing that I can do is to satisfy what Mr. Mayor says, that you cannot see, which is the healing massage on the rubmap. Let me just explain what is going on. The healing massage was said that it was a site that you do advertising, which is not right. The rubme dot map is like a Yelp for businesses. You know, people visit businesses, comment, wrote comment on the website, and this is the only review by the customers about that business, that Mr. Zhang worked there very briefly. And, Mr. Mayor and council members, you can see what it is in that message. The message said, had a massage with this lady, we don't know who that is, was covered the whole time, it was a pretty heavy towel, looks like they are trying to avoid getting shut down. That's what they're doing. They're doing everything, they don't want to run foul of the rules. They know what's going on there, and this customer wanted to go find something, he couldn't get any. But he said, if you want a real massage, you know, warm hand rubbing your back, leg, arm, then give it a try. So, this is a clear sign to show that this massage business was not running what, you know, had the bad reputation on it. I think we need to keep the record clear on that. And that store was actually, Mr. Zhang worked at the store very briefly, worked there in May, and later May, worked there for about months, didn't notice that they don't have a lot of business. That's why maybe they don't have a lot of business. I don't know, I'm not gonna speculate. But this says that business is not the kind of business what, you know, was made out to be at the report, to saying it's not a good business, you know?
But now, this, and I don't want to go down this, but this, this one is in Roseville, and the one he was talking about is in Maplewood, right?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, they use Roseville and Maplewood interchangeably, but the street address does match.
Oh, it's like a mailing address.
Correct.
Okay, yeah. Whoever pulled this up was 988 miles from it. I'm not sure how that worked, but, okay.
It's 700 Roosevelt Street. And so, I want to, and the second one is about the address. I actually printed out, I don't want this to be, my client does not want this to be in the public record, but you can keep it in the city record. It's a driver's license.
Then you don't want to give it to us. No, no, because everything that we do is public record.
Okay, then I prefer not to give it, because it's a, there's a confidential information on the driver's license. He has two driver's licenses, one is, the one that expires, just before he came here, and that one, the, he put down the California address for the old driver's license, and then he got a new driver's license while he worked at Maplewood Mall. He went back to California, got the new, renewed his driver's license, and came back here. And, but however, he provided that driver's license to the city clerk. So, there's no intent that he wants to kind of hide his addresses, to say, to try to intentionally try to provide incomplete addresses. That's what's going on. And also, I want to provide the context, the context that he filled out all the forms. He brought a friend to the city hall and filled out the form right there in the city hall. Unlike, you know, where people will fill out online and check and recheck, he came and filled out right in the city hall. That could explain why some of the, the address is not complete, but as I said, he did complete, provide the new driver's license with what, the address is in California there. So, it's not by intentional. But I realize, I think the key problem is what, the Coon Rapids has, has the requirements in his license requirement about, has to be the COMTA compliance, which is the Commission on Massage Therapy Accreditation Program. The school that Mr. Zhang attended is not COMTA, and the programs is not COMTA. However, Mr. Mayor and council members, if you go to the school, the school is accredited by California Association of the Massage or Chinese Medicine. The students who graduate from their school, the programs are accredited by California, and the graduate from that school can sit for the National Massage Therapist. And Mr. Zhang has passed, not only were allowed to take part in that exam, but also passed it. So, he has a valid license, federal license all over the United States. So, I admit that, no, he's not the COMTA requirement. However, if you go to the site, the Commission on Therapy Accreditation, there's none from California accredited. There are only 58 institutions that were accredited by that, none from California. There are two from Minnesota, and the two from Minnesota's are the Center Point Massage and Shiatu Therapy School and Clinic. The other one is Northwestern Health Science University. I don't know if you have heard about, I've never heard about those. So, as far as I understand, I think, I don't know if that's the new requirements for the city, but based on that one, I'm pretty much sure there will be not very many people who can qualify it for that, for the program. That's, I know I have a high bar, I just want to come here and clarify what is happening here, and this person has a valid license from California. I find there's a massage collar for sale, and he wants to have a business here. So, if the city council doesn't find it comply with the requirements, I guess we don't have any argument. But I just want to put the records straight right here to show that there, first of all, there was no intent for him to hide any information, and he's trying to, honest person, try to get something going here, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I think you did an admirable job. I think our challenge is, is we can't issue a massage enterprise license without a massage therapist license, and we don't have a licensed massage therapist there right now. So, we're kind of stuck, is, I think.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Questions?
I would just, you know, I know that you've been here a couple of different times, and where my frustration is, our process of applying for these licenses is not changed. And, you know, that we ask for, you know, references, we ask for current addresses, we ask for, you know, the information of the education, and, and I don't know if it's, you know, maybe you need to help them do the applications, but this is not a valid application. It does not meet the criteria, it does not meet the code, and it just can't be given out, you know? And if somebody, if he wants to go back and he wants to actually get all of the right information and meet all of our standards, and provide a full and complete application that meets our standards, we would consider it. But when you don't have a complete application and it doesn't meet the standards, I don't see how we can approve it.
Thank you, councilmember. Maybe if that's the case, and I, first of all, I don't come into the process until there's a problem.
But maybe they need to, you know, look at maybe getting assistance, so they don't run into the problem in the first place.
I would really, really appreciate if this council, honorable council... I, I would really, really appreciate if this council, honorable council can to say, "Look, we'll give you a well-assed chance. If you really are an honest man, if you can produce that, I would be willing to work with him." And so, because a rejection of license application is, it's like a summary execution. It's kind of like, it carries heavy consequences for the applicant.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, Mrs. Lenzmeyer.
If you go with denial, he has the ability. There is nothing in that section of the code that prevents him from providing another application. But we do need to act one way or the other on this one so that we don't have an extension or a time clock issue.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I don't know, because in some cities, if you get denied, you cannot apply in the next five years.
Your Honor, if I may. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you. Counsel, thank you for coming in tonight and representing your client. And, and I, I understand the difficult task. And I, I agree with others here that you've advanced a, a good cause for him, although I'm in agreement with the other members of the council. I would ask Ms. Lenzmeyer if this printout from the website could be made part of the support in the record for whatever action the council takes here today. Counsel, I would just note that, you know, this is, these are the facts that we're all dealing with. And, and you took a bit of a risk by providing this to us. And in some respects, it supports your position. You've read from the document. In other respects, I think that it actually supports the city's position. I'm not going to get into reading the detail in here candidly because some of it contains language that is concerning to the city and supports, I think, the, the statements in the record that this website that was used for advertising healing massage in Maplewood or Roseville also promotes prostitution. Although the business is listed as a non-erotic business and there is a mechanism in that website for reporting any sex trafficking here, there are other statements that follow that, that tend to promote illicit activity, prostitution and the like. And so, I find this to be a concerning connection. And yet, we're left with a lot of unanswered questions due to the incompleteness of the investigation, which, which is a necessary part of the city's due diligence and background checking to protect public safety. So, in the interest of full disclosure, I intend to support the city's position for a denial of this license on the three stated grounds that Ms. Lenzmeyer articulated. I would say one of the grounds, number one, I think a slight clarification needs to be made to it. It says during the background investigation, the business Mr. Zhang reports to have been working at was, and then there's kind of a non sequitur there, and are currently found to be, and I think was an employer that was currently found to be listed on an adult website, rubmaps.com. And the website is known to be utilized by its users for soliciting prostitution. And I think that is further backed up. So, I just, with that modification, I'm going to make a motion for a denial of the license here on the three grounds that were stated by Ms. Lenzmeyer.
Second?
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Does that, does that include what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you.
In the three conditions?
Mr. Mayor, I just, if I just can say one thing. I appreciate council member Johnson's comments. I just want to make one thing. The rub me dot map, I don't know how many of the council members know, there used to be a website called Backpage, Backpage.com that the US government shut it down because that's the site where they do advertisement. Rub me dot com is not a commercial website, it's an advertising website. It's the people going, you know, it's those people who are trying to look for funds or whatever to go and comment. It's like Yelp, as I said, you go to restaurant, you comment. So, there's no way, if you are in certain businesses, you cannot provide, prevent people to go on website to comment on the website. So, that's the whole point. It's not because if your website appear on that reviewing website, you have a better reputation. I, I think that, that's not always the case. Yes, councilman?
I got it. Councilmember Demmer?
I do think that's a valid clarification, that we shouldn't use the word advertised. Because that, that adverti, right, so that we...
That was our intent to here to list.
Right.
Ms. Lenzmeyer might have mentioned advertising and comments to you, but I think what we intended was listed.
Yeah.
The business doesn't pay for an ad on there. But I think there is a connection. You don't see Massage Envy in there. You don't see any of our other licensed individuals on that particular website. So, that's where I disagree with council that, you know, that they don't really control that piece of it. Clearly, the folks that are going to that shop knew what they were going to get or, and that's why they were posting on there.
I think, though, it's important to point out that the other findings are enough to deny the license.
I would also agree with that.
And so that if we decided this was completely out of their control, which, no. Look, someone could put something about me on Wikipedia and there's not much I can do. I don't understand the full mechanism here, whether it's they list it and then people comment or what. But there, there's a lot of different ways the internet can go. But the other findings are enough to deny the application is what's very important.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Councilmember?
I'd just like to point out that we have several massage businesses, I don't know exactly how many, with dozens and dozens of licensed therapists that we never have any issues with. So, I just think that's worth saying that obviously we get the ones here that are being denied. But it's not like we have a difficult ordinance that is on, people are unable to abide by. We have lots of businesses in town doing this.
Fair point.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the denial is affirmed. We are up to open mic public comment, aren't we? No, no, we're going to do our community to, no, we're, I was excited. I was excited to get to the open mic. All right, you have three minutes, Grant. All right. So, item seven is to accept the 2019 Community Development Annual Report. Mr. Fernelius?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So, I have the privilege of presenting the 2019 Community Development Department Report. This is a copy of it. I believe you have a copy of it in your packet as well. This is something that we have done for a number of years. The last couple of years, we've revised the format. And I know last year, council made a request of staff to actually spend a little bit of time talking about this report. I think it's mostly out of modesty that we have put this on consent. But I thought I would take just a couple of minutes of your time this evening to hit some of the high points in terms of the things that we should, I think, celebrate and recognize that went on here in Coon Rapids, that certainly, community development and our broader organization were involved in. So, just kind of paging through this report, it covers, I don't know, seven or eight different topical areas, if you will, related to economic development type activity. A few things I wanted to, to mention real briefly. So, one was the Alina Health Customer Experience Center. That opened up earlier this year, or actually, I shouldn't say last year. 300 jobs. We had a presentation at the Coon Rapids Business Council last week. And they are very, very excited to be here in Coon Rapids. Very pleased with their decision to locate here. Eventually, they're on a trajectory to have up to 500 employees at that location down in the Evergreen Industrial Area. But very, very pleased to have that employer in our community. RMS Company, which is our largest private employer, 900 employees and counting, went through another expansion last year, adding an additional 80 jobs. So, that company just continues to grow and we're very, very happy for their, their presence here in Coon Rapids. Steinwall Companies went through an expansion, as did Green Bay Packaging. So, both of those companies expanded their, their presence here in Coon Rapids. And we also had a couple of new industrial, or one industrial building with two new tenants that have located in our community, as well as a new retail development up at Main Street and Northdale. So, those are all, you know, employers, retail opportunities, just, I think, a really important thing that has expanded our tax base and local, local economy here in Coon Rapids. Second thing I thought I would mention is new housing development. We really have not seen the scale of housing development here in Coon Rapids, really in the last couple of decades that we've seen in the last few years. And obviously, we have some projects that are on the horizon. These are options for, for more housing choices for not only residents who are here, but welcoming new people to our community. And it supports our economic base, retailers, employers, other service providers. Having rooftops is really critical to that. Probably the, the highlight that everyone has been talking about most recently was Port Riverwack. We started that grading work last year. We're going to continue that this spring and summer. But we did finally close on that property two weeks ago, which brought to a close a, a really important chapter in Coon Rapids history. That will be 136 units of detached townhomes that will eventually be developed over about three years. So, we're very excited about that. The Riverdale Station Transit Station Development, which Sherman Associates wrapped up actually just this past month, has developed 250 units of market rate and some affordable units, mixed income apartments. So, those, the one building is 100% leased. I just heard from Sherman this week that the, the second building is about 25% leased. So, they're very excited about that. In fact, they contacted us to have a discussion soon about phase two of that project. So, they're, they're feeling very bullish about Coon Rapids and, and, and that project in particular. And then Spring House Apartments, which was developed by Real Estate Equities down on the southern part of our, our community, will provide 168 units of workforce housing as well. So, again, I think a demonstration that developers are interested in Coon Rapids. There's a lot of exciting things going on and a lot of housing opportunities on the horizon. The other thing I wanted to point out was a building permit activity. We had $126 million worth of permit activity, 8,600 permits, 16,000 inspections over the course of, of last year. We don't spend a lot of time talking about the role of our regulatory incentive programs, commonly referred to as our code enforcement program. But I will tell you that Coon Rapids is a leader when it comes to both our proactive code enforcement as well as the incentive programs that we have. So, we use kind of both of those tools to really help make our neighborhoods more livable and attractive. This is the fourth year in a row that we've seen a decline in the number of citations. I should say it's a decline in citations, but an 80% compliance rate is the fourth year in a row where we've seen an 80% compliance rate. So, we think that our administrative citation program is very effective at, at addressing those, those issues that come up. Our rental licensing program, we, we licensed a total of 5,700 rental units. Obviously, we've been adding some additional units with these projects that we've, that we've discussed. So, that will involve additional licensing activity in the future. But we have the, the staff and the capacity to handle that. The other thing I wanted to touch on was our home improvement programs. This is something that is really impressive. In fact, we've won at least one award for our Homes for Generation Two program. Last year, there was a million seven of investment in our community. Almost $9 million since 2013 when we, when we established that program. There are a number of communities around the metro and other places around the country that have, are trying to model that program, which is, is really innovative. Nearly $800,000 in home improvement loans. So, again, that's people investing in, in their properties through programs that, that we administer here at the city in, in partnership with the Center for Energy and Environment. The other thing is our front door program, which was unveiled last year. This is the program that the Coon Rapids Home Improvement Foundation finances. Last year, we had over a million dollars of investment that resulted through that incentive program. We have additional applications and other funding cycle. This year, in fact, next week, we have a lottery to select the next round of applicants. So, we're really excited about that. It really seems to have kind of rejuvenated and kind of kickstarted interest in, in doing exterior improvements. So, so that's something that we should all be very proud of. The North Suburban Home Show, I'll take this opportunity to advertise that. That is next Saturday, the 14th, from 8:00 to 2:00 PM. We did that last year. This is part of a partnership with the cities of Andover and Anoka. Very, very successful. And so, we would encourage all our residents to, to take advantage of that. And then lastly, our, our home remodeling tour, which we're going to do again this year in May. I don't think we have the specific dates set aside, but that really showcases the homes that have been improved through our various programs. There is a supplemental report, which I won't go into from the commissions, but I do want to also acknowledge the good work that the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment and Appeals do. They volunteer their time to not only attend meetings, but review packets, complicated cases, which takes time, and we're very appreciative of those efforts. And lastly, I just want to acknowledge the work of our staff. I am really fortunate to work with a very smart, dedicated professional team that I know many of the council are aware of. But I think it's just worth noting for, for the public that we have a great staff. They are really dedicated to a high quality of professional service. Makes my job really easy to do and I'm really proud to, to work with them. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about our report.
Mr. Fernelius, I can't tell you how thankful I am when I represent the city at like Coon Rapids Business Council and the guys from RMS and the guys from around town come up and they talk about how great you guys are to work with. I mean, often they're pointing at Matt Brown, but, you know. That's true.
Yes. Matt is exceptional.
Yeah, so, no, it, it is. It's just, it's great. And Green Bay, Green Bay Packaging and everybody's real, real thrilled with the help they get here.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, just even an extra little call out. I know that your team has done exceptional work. But to be able to pull it all together, I'd like to also thank our communications department because the package that they put together in that annual report is really impressive and showcases the city very, very well. And I would be proud to show that anywhere and talk about all the great things that we're doing, so.
Thank you for noting that.
So now, do we need to accept this with a motion?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
I move to accept the 2019 Community Development Annual Report.
Second?
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker? All right. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that is enthusiastically confirmed. All right. Thanks, Mr. Fernelius. And now, we are at open mic public comment. And open mic is not to address issues that are on the city agenda, the, the council agenda for the evening. But I would point out that if you did come in to talk to us about the trail, that specifically was not on the agenda. So, you could take up to three minutes to share your feelings with us for the future of the trail, if you would like. Just throwing that out there for, for instance. But open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. And remarks will be limited to three minutes. Is anybody here to address counsel for open mic? Okay, then, so we'll move past the open mic and we are on to other business.
I thought you had a ringer in the audience.
I did not have a ringer. But I figured they came to talk to us and I want to, I want to give them an opportunity. All right. So, other business, I wanted to, when you were talking about communications, the Coon Rapids Park and Rec should be, magazine should be in your mailboxes this week. Great job on that. All the spring and summer programming and... All the spring and summer programming and the community events. Awesome job. That was, uh, just kudos to everybody that was involved in putting that out. Secondly, I would like to mention that March twelfth, next week, is the next dessert and concert series, right?
Correct.
Thursday night, March twelfth?
Mm-hmm.
And that would be Richard Zuplinsky, the accordion player. That's my guy. All right. So it's Thursday, March twelfth. And then, uh, as Mr. Frenelius mentioned, Saturday, March fourteenth, eight to two, up at the Andover YMCA. It's the Northwest Remodeling Show, or Program. And that is, that's an amazing event. It just fills. And if you've got kids, bring kids. Home Depot comes. They've usually got the projects for the kids and there's just all kinds of things going on there. And then, uh, I really wanted to find out from Mr. Anderson. I heard rumors that a driving range will be open soon.
Mayor, council, yes, thank you. The driver is actually officially open at eight AM this morning. And we certainly had a bunch of takers today. But the weekend is supposed to be gorgeous, as I'm sure many, many know. And we are expecting a very busy weekend. Still plenty of room for everybody, of course, to come and, and hit golf balls, enjoy the restaurant and, and the clubhouse, uh, opportunities. But if this weather long-term holds, uh, you never know, we might have golfers on the greens by St. Patrick's Day, which would be just a fantastic thing and a perfect way to start the golf season.
I think we just passed into wishful thinking, but... I love, Facebook always comes back with these picture memories. And every year I get the picture of you blowing, snow blowing off the driving range several years ago. It comes up, you want to put this app on as a memory? And I think, eh, that's all right. It's a, it's a, it's a nice memory though. All right. Other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
One of the other pieces that, when I look at our webpage, so you've got till Friday for the Coon Creek Watershed District. There's a chance, um, there's the district board. Commissioner, Councilmember Johnson was on that commission, um, or board and could probably tell you everything about it. But by Friday, if you are interested in putting your name in the hat for being on that board, they were accepting applications. And we had a big case tonight about, that the Coon Creek Watershed looks at. And it's how do we manage the wetlands and things? So if you're interested, throw your name in the hat.
If I might just follow up on that for just a second. I, I think it's particularly important for Coon Rapids residents who might be interested in that to step forward and, and contact the city and put in an application. And that's because right now, Coon Rapids is the biggest contributing factor to the watershed district. Uh, we have the most at stake in it, but we don't have a local representative on the Coon Creek Board of Managers. And it would be nice, um, if, uh, we could provide a full list and slate of candidates to the county board to consider so that we might have our own, uh, representative or at least a citizen from Coon Rapids, um, that is on that board so that Coon Rapids has a voice there.
All right, thank you. Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and council, one more note in that regard. We do have two people who have submitted, um, or requested be a part of that nomination process. Uh, we need at least three, if not more, to provide a valid list to the Anoka County Board who actually makes the appointment. And so from our perspective, our goal is to create a valid list that they need to consider. Now, if other submit, other cities submit lists that also have three names or more, um, the county board has the authority to choose from any of those lists, but they are contained to those names that have been submitted. But it is really important for us to submit a valid list in order to be even considered as a part of that process. So we need at least one more person to step up and participate.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Any other business to come before council this evening?
The other thing I was going to say that is the Reserve Year Garden Plot, right? So, um, there is a community garden and you can register up through, oh, January to February. But then there's also ways that you can still get in and get your plot, right? Because it looks to be that's still active.
I believe that to be the case, yes.
And so you could get a large plot or a small plot. And then it's just you have your own little community garden in your space that you can plant your tomatoes or your veg, any other vegetables or whatever you'd like. And you don't have to do it in your backyard. But that, I think, is a, an interesting and fun, um, aspect of the community.
And do they promise a deer-free and rabbit-free environment?
I do not believe so.
You have to put your own fence up.
But you get to meet your neighbors who garden.
There you go.
There you go.
All right. Let, here we go again. Other business?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.